Good afternoon and thank you Chair. Present is Dr. Lomo, Ms. Kekko, Ms. Shabangu, Mr. Mutubazi, Ms. Maruei, Mr. Van Staden and Dr. Tlatte. I have received apologies from Ms. Clark and Ms. Maydola. We are going to receive two presentations from Vape Right and from Professor Matz. Thank you Chair.
All right, welcome once more honourable members and welcome to the staff that is supporting us in Parliament. Also special welcome to those who have come into Intelligent Portfolio Committee on this tobacco control bills and the toilet device systems. We will start with the first presenter.
Recording in progress.
Who will then be given not more than thirty minutes to present a document that we already received from your staff. Then after honourable members will interact with your presentation through questions and their direct seeking comments. You then thereafter come back to after you have listened to all, so you take a pen and paper after a presentation so that we all ask one time. And then you come back to clarify on those points that honourable members have raised. And for any member who has got a challenge with a video, we still wish to hear your voice. So you will ask first whether the bandwidth is allowing you to have both the video and and the voice. For now, let me hand over to the presenter who will introduce himself or herself and those that are with and then you start the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you Dr. Lomo. I just want to advise that I am sitting in Dubai. I'm actually attending a vape expo. And I'm not a hundred percent sure of the bandwidth in this hotel that I'm in, but I will proceed. I'm going to share my presentation. Once again, good afternoon Chairman Lomo and honourable committee members. Firstly, I would like to extend my gratitude to Ms. Majalamba for the extremely professional and highly efficient manner in which she facilitated my being able to present to you today. I am addressing you both as the founder and as a joint managing director of Vape Right Pty Limited. Vape Right is one of the larger vape companies in South Africa, encompassing both brick and mortar retail outlets as well as an online e-commerce website and additionally a wholesale division and a manufacturing division. From the outset, I need to make it very clear that I am not here to address the science around vaping. As this has been addressed by others, including Kurt Yeoh of Vaping Saved My Life. I am not a doctor or a scientist. However, what I will state is that ten years ago, Vape Right's first retail outlet was opened. Since then, we have served over one hundred thousand unique customers. We have never had a customer report any form of ill health or affliction as a result of vaping. If even one of those customers had experienced any negative health effects from vaping, they would surely have contacted us to advise us. What I am here to address is the retail side of the vaping industry. How the proposed bill is affecting us right now? How it may affect our ability to continue as a viable business? The issue of youth access and solutions are proposed to restrict youth access. My personal story is that I started smoking cigarettes in high school at the age of sixteen and continued smoking until I was thirty-four years old, quitting when my first child was born. Unfortunately, I started smoking again at the age of forty-one. In twenty thirteen, at the age of forty-six and desperate to quit smoking, I discovered electronic cigarettes. I was able to quit smoking immediately, did not experience withdrawal symptoms or any desire to return to using combustible cigarettes. I quit using a chocolate flavour and a hazelnut flavour. But we will get to the issue of flavours. Now, at the age of fifty-eight, I have been tobacco-free for twelve years and I am healthier than ever. Getting back to twenty thirteen, when I quit smoking, I was both an SA pilot and an entrepreneur. And I recognized what for me was a miracle product that few knew about but millions could benefit from. A nicotine delivery system without the harmful and deadly tar, carbon monoxide and carcinogens found in cigarette smoke. And so Vape Right was born. As much as I got great pleasure and professional satisfaction, sorry, from transporting passengers safely by air all over the world, the greatest satisfaction of converting smokers from deadly cigarettes to far less harmful and non-deadly electronic nicotine delivery systems encouraged me to accept a retrenchment package from SA in twenty twenty-one and to be able to give my full attention to running and growing Vape Right. Vape Right is headquartered in Limbrow Business Park in Santenjauten. We have thirty-eight stores nationwide with that number set to increase well above forty before the end of the year. Our employee count is over one hundred and forty full-time employees nationally. Most of our middle and senior management and even some of our sales staff have been with us since inception or joined us during our initial growth years. We are currently operating on a knife's edge while awaiting the outcome of deliberations and consultations over the final composition of the Tobacco Products and Electronic Delivery Systems Control Bill. How are we affected? To be very honest, we are not sure that our company will survive the current proposed version of the bill. The bottom right corner of the slide contains a legal clause we have asked our lawyers to compose for insertion in all new retail leases as well as all lease renewals. This is to limit the financial liability the directors of Vape Right face if we cannot operate profitably after the implementation of the bill and are forced to close all our stores and retrench all our staff, effectively going out of business. The exile tax imposed on illiquid by National Treasury has already affected our profit level significantly. The reason given by National Treasury to motivate this tax was to address the rise in youth vaping and the illicit tobacco trade. During public participation over the proposed tax at the time, I advised Treasury that the result would be exactly the opposite and my predictions were correct. The illicit trade is growing exponentially as criminal elements smuggle vape products through our poorest borders, avoid exile tax and then legitimize the products by distributing them through legal front companies. Why are containers of disposable vape devices being shipped to Mozambique and Namibia when there is literally no market for these goods there? The answer is simple. That our trucks through our border either assisted by correct customs officials or they have routes which are not subject to the presence of customs officials. Then there are the containers arriving at Durban port with vape products which are not declared. SAPS recently posted about just such a seizure where they traced the container from Durban port to a Johannesburg warehouse and found illicit vape products in the container. The warehouse manager was arrested. Additionally, many of these illicit products are sold to the very retailers who sell to the youth. They will supply anyone, including China malls, electronic goods kiosks in malls and any convenience store whether operating legally or illegally. This has resulted in the increased availability of disposable vape devices, which is a vape of choice for those under eighteen. The tax has also enabled a lot of companies to effectively compete with established companies like Vape Right by allowing them to supply FMCG retailers, which is where most of the youth purchase their vape products. Vape Right's wholesale department has very strict criteria for retailers applying for a new account. They must have a registered company, a VAT number and a fixed business address. If they are an online e-commerce store, they must already have an established website. And lastly, regarding the exile tax, is that it discriminates against the poor. The cost of the exile tax has placed these products out of the financial reach of the poorest of the poor. Considering that it appears that this committee is warming to the assertion that vaping is a significantly harm-reduced method of nicotine delivery, why should this life-saving benefit only be available to those who have means? Sorry, I'm just struggling with one screen here. Let me head on to slide three. With regards to the issue of youth access, with youth being defined as anyone not yet eighteen years of age and where in South Africa, a person of eighteen is considered an adult, Vape Right is proposing the following steps be taken by the Department of Health. Firstly, the legal age for using any nicotine product versus just tobacco products should be written into law. As such, we propose an immediate amendment to the Current Tobacco Products Control Amendment Act sixty-three of two thousand and eight in that the wording be amended to read "to prohibit the sale of tobacco and nicotine products to and by persons under the age of eighteen years." This could be actioned immediately and would not be opposed by reputable or ethical retailers of these products. Secondly, any retailer selling any type of electronic delivery system, whether with or without nicotine, be licensed in the same manner that alcohol retailers are licensed. The mechanism is already in place for alcohol licenses. So how difficult would it be to apply the same to nicotine? What this will do is to force the current mainstream retailers such as supermarkets, petrol stations and forecourts who allow vape products to be purchased by under-eighteen consumers to abide by the law and age-verify all purchases. Unfortunately, this will increase the size of the already rapidly growing illicit market but will also allow for the identification and prosecution of those retail outlets who are not licensed or who are licensed and are selling to underage. Then, in addition, we propose two additional issues which we feel need to be addressed legally and legislatively. The maximum nicotine strength in any liquid intended for use in electronic delivery systems should be limited to three percent from the current very prevalent five percent specifically found in many disposable vape products. The main reason disposable vape manufacturers use five percent nicotine formulation is that it is more addictive than lower levels of nicotine. Lastly, we strongly support a ban on single-use disposable vape products. The overriding reason for banning these products is due to the massive harm they do to the environment. In saying that, I have personally written to the Department of Forestry, Fisheries and the Environment and requested a meeting with the Minister. The latest communication from the personal assistant to the Minister is that it has been referred to the relevant official and that feedback will be provided once it becomes available. I would like to read part of our motivation to DFFE. It was as follows. "From an environmental aspect, every month over one million single-use disposable vapes are thrown away with their batteries throughout South Africa and the vast majority are not recycled." Where other vape products differ from single-use products is that the batteries are separate from the liquid tank or pot and are not thrown away but are reused until they fail, which could be after years of use. If required, once I'm finished with this presentation, I can physically show you what I'm referring to between a single-use and a regular disposable. The UK government recently banned single-use disposables. This ban was implemented by the Department for Environment, Food and Rural Affairs in the UK. This guidance is extremely well-written and I recommend that the Portfolio Committee on Health Committee members peruse this document as per the link at the bottom of the slide. We believe that banning single-use disposables would be better achieved through DFFE. As can be seen in the photo on this slide, which is of confiscated vape products from one single search at Brackburn High School just a few weeks ago, literally every vape in this photo is a single-use disposable. It is a vape of choice for those under eighteen due to its plug-and-play design. What I need to make very clear is that Vape Right has voluntarily chosen to self-impose an age limit of eighteen on all sales. Customers entering our stores are greeted by a sign stating "No Under Eighteen." All of our products and marketing clearly state "No Under Eighteen." In South Africa, the legal age at which a person becomes an adult, also known as the age of majority, is eighteen years old. This means that individuals gain full legal rights and responsibilities upon reaching their eighteenth birthday. Before the age of eighteen, individuals are considered children and are subject to certain legal limitations and protections. Vape Right is in the final stages of implementing an advanced age verification system on our e-commerce website provided by the company Secure Citizen. This is a first in South Africa for a vape company. It will also be used for in-store customer counts. It is a once-off verification using the customer's ID number which will match that ID number to the name of the South African citizen or flag the ID number as being false. However, this committee also needs to accept that there is an obligation for parents of children to take responsibility for their child as any payment method used by their child is provided by the parents. Vape Right asks for ID from any customer we suspect to be under eighteen. Our staff are trained to identify fake IDs and will confiscate any ID that we suspect to be fake. We have, believe it or not, actually had a parent contact us requesting that we give them back their child's fake ID. At Vape Right, we are very sensitive to branding, flavours and marketing. The first question we ask ourselves when marketing to our consumers as well as branding or procuring new flavours for illiquid or new hardware, including disposable vapes, is the following. Is there anything about this marketing or branding or product that could be considered or construed as being attractive to or targeting the youth, being those under eighteen years of age? We abide by our company motto which is[1020.60][1021.02]"If you smoke, switch to vaping. If you don't smoke or vape, don't start." This is the advice we give to anyone wanting to start vaping who does not smoke cigarettes. Vape Right is all about getting smokers to quit smoking using electronic nicotine delivery systems. To do that, we have to offer a variety of flavours to keep them engaged and satisfied. As I mentioned earlier, the two flavours that allowed me to quit smoking were chocolate and hazelnut. Kurt Yeoh mentioned that he used strawberry flavours. Neither of us were under eighteen when we quit, but in my case, forty-three years of age. Anyone claiming that Vape Right sells flavours aimed at the youth is simply blowing hot air. The fact that all of our customers are eighteen years of age or older dispels that claim. At fifty-eight years of age, I have access to any vape product I desire. And yet my current flavours of choice are cherry vanilla, mango on ice and banana strawberry. That is what keeps me engaged and stops me from returning to using cigarettes. What we agree with and completely support this committee on is that a flavour such as a branded soft drink, a cookie, a candy or any other permutation which a child could be attracted to is not acceptable as a flavour. The same applies to packaging and branding on illiquid products and disposable vape products. Vape Right retail locations are not selected to be near schools as we don't sell to schoolchildren. We position ourselves to be easily accessible to our adult customers. We are not opposed to a restriction on the proximity of a retail outlet selling vape and tobacco products to be at least five hundred metres from a school. I will now address certain proposals in the draft bill as well as various other issues that were raised by the committee during previous presentations. However, my overriding message is that electronic delivery systems do not belong in the same bill as tobacco or to be governed by the same regulations as tobacco. Other than the commonality of nicotine, there are distinctly different industries. As Vape Right, we support regulation of this industry. The Department of Health should be embracing this industry for the harm reduction aspect. Vape Right does not support the proposed legislation whereby products would need to be concealed from consumers. A vape store only sells vape products. How do we conceal everything in our store? How do we educate customers as technology improves and new products come to market? This is a perfect example of why vape products and tobacco products should be regulated separately. Cigarettes will always be cigarettes. They all look roughly the same and the only real distinguishing aspect is the strength of the nicotine and a possible menthol flavour. Vape product technology is constantly evolving. In the early days, vaping devices had crude metal, and this is an example. In the early days, vaping devices had crude metal coils to heat and vaporize the illiquid. Trace elements of metal were found in the vapor. Within just a few years, the metal coil technology improved to where no metal trace was found in the vapor. Now the metal coils are being replaced by ceramic coils. This is just one small example of the massive leaps and bounds being made in vaping technology to make the product safer. Vape Right supports the banning of vending machines for tobacco and vape products as these are often located in restaurants and golf clubs where anyone can purchase from them with no age verification. On the issue of visiting suitable foreign countries to study how they have effectively used vaping to significantly reduce smoking levels, I recommend that this committee visits Sweden as well as possibly the UK. I just caution you to be aware that developed countries like Sweden and the UK do not have eighteen-pound packs of illicit cigarettes widely available for sale, as is the case in South Africa. Much of their success is due to their smokers being able to switch to vaping at comparable prices to smoking. This would not be the case in South Africa due to the huge price disparity between illicit cigarettes and vape products. I only have two more issues to address to give relevance as to why the illicit trade can and will flourish as vaping and smoking become more regulated. SAPR is an entity falling under the Department of Health. Cannabis is governed by SAPR. There are around one hundred licenses that have been issued purely for cultivation for export, not for selling in South Africa. It is illegal to sell THC products and cannabis flower in South Africa. Yet there are estimated to be as many as six thousand cannabis and THC retailers in South Africa and SAPR is fully aware of this. They are aware because some of these retailers have stores and kiosks in some of the most prestigious malls in the country and the SAPR CEO was recently quoted in various media articles as condemning it. Your committee must also be aware of this. So why is nothing being done about this? One company with at least thirty kiosks sells THC edibles. Sorry, give me one second. And apparently marijuana as well in many major shopping centres using a membership system which according to a two-hundred-thousand-pound legal opinion from our lawyers is not legal. Another listed company has over one hundred franchise cannabis stores, once again with many in major shopping malls, selling cannabis under a supposed SAPR-approved clinical trial. Really? You walk in, show your ID and walk out with cannabis? How is that a clinical trial? Lastly, there are cannabis shops using doctors to apply for section twenty-one approvals from SAPR for cannabis groups. However, section twenty-one is supposed to be for critically ill patients for whom normal medicine is no longer effective, not just for anyone. So how are there over six thousand illegal cannabis retailers in South Africa operating under the watch of the Department of Health, SAPR and SAPS? How will the Department of Health protect legal vape retailers from similar illegality and criminality when we must abide by the laws of the country but for those who choose not to, there are no implications? And finally, I am currently sitting in Dubai attending the world's largest vape convention and expo. We met with a Malaysian company today, which is the largest supplier of disposable vape products in South Africa with estimates that they may have a turnover equivalent to that of the next ten largest companies combined. They appeared from nowhere less than three years ago and now dwarf their nearest competitors. When discussing the issue of the proposed tobacco bill with them, they are not at all concerned. Their Director of Sales for Africa told us that wherever vape products have been banned or had major restrictions placed on them such as Australia, Sri Lanka, Malaysia and Thailand, the illicit market has grown to up to three times what it was before the ban. His reasoning is that the ban makes the product worth that much more with huge profit margins. It appears that they are rubbing their hands in glee at the prospect of this bill being introduced and there can only be one reason why. I therefore caution this committee as you may just be setting up the vaping industry for an illicit trade comparable or greater to that which the tobacco industry is currently experiencing. This would result in unlimited access to vape products for anyone, including children. So that completes my presentation.
Yes, Mr. Barry Butchman. You said you're a former pilot. You're still flying people now or you stopped?
No, I've stopped Chair.
Okay, must give me your licence please. Thank you very much. Honourable members, here is the presentation. I would like to recognize the hands from honourable members and I got my first one from honourable Van Staden. Number one, keep your numbers honourable members. Number two will be honourable Shabangu. The third one is honourable Dr. Leru. The fourth one is honourable Kumalo. Keep your numbers honourable members. The next one, number five, honourable Zungula. Zungula, number six, honourable Mutubasi. Then seven, one is honourable Sineh. Okay, no other takers. Okay. I'll take one round honourable members. So I take it that the members on the platform whose hands have not been raised or are not shouting. Me too are not asking questions. All right. That's honourable Van Staden, two, Shabangu, three, Dr. Leru, four, Kumalo, five, Zungula, five, six, Mutubasi and last Sineh. One after the other. I won't come in.
Excuse me Chair.
Yes, excuse you.
My phone was frozen. It's Kekko. I failed to raise the hand Chair. My apologies. I'm indicating to speak. Yes.
Number eight. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you Chair President. Good afternoon to all the colleagues and to Mr. Butchman. Thank you also for your presentation. I hope I'm audible enough. I've got some problems with my network. Some people have an opinion that a retail display ban would in effect criminalize a portion of the retail sector. If it indeed is also your opinion, what impact will a retail display ban have on your business and on the vaping industry in all? That's my first question. My second question is, how many retailers in your industry will be forced out of business when this bill come into effect? My third question is, you were also speaking about separate legislation with vaping must be under a separate legislation rather than with a legislation like we have in front of us now. I want to hear from you, what is the reason why you advocating also for this that it must be separated in separate legislation? And then there's, my fourth question is, there's always, you've said it also now, I think in your presentation also now, you mentioned that vaping is better than smoking and better than tobacco. But then playing devil's advocate, yeah, and the other hand, you also see sometime in newspapers the articles on people's landing in hospital due to vaping and all that sort of stuff and it's on social media as well. I just want to know, you've touched a bit on it, but I want to know if you can elaborate a bit more on it. If you have done scientific studies or let's say have done scientific studies on this to show it, that it is indeed better to vape than it is better to smoke. So have you consulted with scientists over a few years to collect this evidence and so forth? And then I just want to know what impact according to you will this new legislation have on my country's economy? You've also touched on the illicit trade in the tobacco market and some people believe that it will worsen under You've also touched on the illicit trade in the tobacco market and some people believe that it will worsen under this new legislation. I want to know what impact will it, if you agree with that, what impact it also will have on your industry? Then, second last question, does this bill have any benefits for public health? And do you think that this bill will be difficult to enforce and if so, why? And my last question is, are you willing to work with the Department of Health and government? To form a separate legislation like you have been advocating for? Thank you, Chair Person.
Good evening, Chair Person and other honorable members. And the presenter that has just presented to us. I also want to appreciate this opportunity to get this presentation while learning everything. Chair, the presenter mentioned that he is in support of this bill protecting. Children from accessing the products, but he does not elaborate on how. And also, if you say you oppose the product being regulated under the same law. How would you ensure that you protected the children because with this bill we also would want to protect the children from smoking? So if you oppose the regulation of the bill under the same law, the pre-product under the same law, how would you ensure that to protect the children? You also mentioned that you visited Sweden. Which is one of the countries. Which regulated the tobacco and the vapes under one law in twenty eighteen. Some of these countries include Canada and many more. Have you therefore identified any problem with those countries? As you mentioned that you visited Sweden, have you identified any problem? For them in their approach of regulating the tobacco and vapes under one law? If maybe you can explain to this portfolio committee if there is a problem that we have identified with those countries? Thank you, Chair Person. Those are the two questions that I had.
Dr. Leroux, come on.
My apologies, Chair. I struggling to find the right button. And I thank you to the presenter and for Mr. Butchman for his interesting presentation. And yeah, thank you for bringing those issues to our attention. And I just had a few questions. Around your presentation, one of the things that you mentioned right at the start was that you do have concerns that if this. Legislation goes through, your company that is trying to. Sell vapes in an ethical manner is likely to go out of business. And what aspect of the bill is putting your business at risk? Secondly, in terms of the illicit vaping that is happening, is that. When you say illicit vaping, that's being vapes that are being sold at the moment, does that refer to vapes that are not. Do not have excise duty on them, I don't have taxes on them? Or, yeah, and what would you say, what is your estimation of how much is currently illicit versus. Legal and on which excise duty is being paid? Could you perhaps just illustrate the difference between the vapes that you sell and the vapes. And how the approach at BP or a SPA versus what you, your approach? I understand that some of it would be around age, even though there's no law on this at the moment, that you do not sell to under eighteens. Is that part of it or is there anything more on that? And then, if you could give us an idea of the price difference between the multi-use vaping devices versus the single-use vaping classes? And, I mean, yeah, of course, I understand there's environmental aspect of it, but also the. It obviously makes vaping much more accessible to teenagers if it's cheaper. So I assume that that's part of the reason why you are against the single vaping. But if you can give us an idea of those, please, that's it from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chair Person. Let me also join my colleagues for. Accepting what we call the presentation from the presenter. But Chair, I'm just having two questions that I want clearly to all. One, the presenter chair have suggested that vape products. Should be made affordable than smoking products. So my question is, Chair, why should a public health bill promote addiction to. Products that are not scientifically proven to have health benefits? Lastly, Chair, since the presenter have said the vape and tobacco industry are two distinct industries. Can he name any big tobacco company that is not manufacturing vapes? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Evening to the colleagues, Chair Person and Mr. Barry. I've got a couple of questions. Firstly, Mr. Barry, thank you for coming to present. Are your assertions based on science? Because you find that many people come to the committee present, but they present things that. They are perceptions on their view, they're not based on any form of science. Would you confidently say your assertions are based on science to say that? If a person were to make a decision, a smoker, if a smoker were to make a decision. It would be better for the smoker to move from smoking cigarettes and move towards. Vaping, which is less harmful, that's the first one. And if a non-smoker were to make a decision, you would advise that they must not smoke at all? But if they were to smoke, a less harmful product would be vaping or pouches or any of those products. So the question I have there is that, is that based on science or what is it based on? Secondly, if the bill were to be passed as it is now. Do you think that that would make the illicit market or illicit trade to be further worsened? And then make the strain on public health to be much more worse than ordinarily what it should be? Then the second, the other question is, if the bill bans single use of vapes. Will that help poor smokers given the high price of retail systems? With regards to the. The typical bottles for liquid are sixty-one, twenty and two hundred milliliters at three runs nineteen cents. Are there any of those prohibitive? Also, how is the banning of disposables going to solve the illicit problem? Are we not going to still see illicit trade in these product categories? And is it not going indirectly to encourage unsafe use of vapes? Which is targeting the kids if the disposables are banned? And also in your estimation, who is responsible for the selling of vapes to young kids as it is now at the moment? I hope my questions are clear. Thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks very much for the opportunity and also thanks for the presentation. In your opening, you said that you're not sure if you'll live to make a profit if this bill goes through. Why, why are you saying that? And secondly, I think members have covered this issue of banning because banning in itself. Has unintended consequences and the objective of this bill is to control. Now, most of the advocates of vaping want to put it as not a health hazard. Now, the intention of this bill at some point speaks to the control and the demarcation. Would you advocate that when we talk about the control and the demarcation, therefore yourselves will promote. Vaping anywhere in any establishment where one gets into? Will you advocate for that? And just to say, one member of the public during the hearings. Was advocating that perhaps maybe because business has failed over the years to control. Selling to young kids, perhaps we should consider issuing licenses to individuals. Who are to buy and also put the limit as to how many one must purchase. Because if you don't do that, you are promoting overbuying. And because you are advocating for health, that might be able to assist in the control of health. What is your take on such a statement whereby individuals will have to be issued with licenses to buy vaping? Thank you, Chair Person.
Thank you very much, Chair Person, and good evening to everyone in the platform. Chair, my first question, the presenter. All of your recommendations about how vapes should be regulated are contained in the current bill. Given the cost of policymaking and the very low similarities in the use. Manufacturers and also target population as described in your presentation. Since you said you are targeting smokers, why would you recommend that the government go through? This whole process for a new product that has been introduced into the market? Does that mean that whenever the industry or a similar industry makes new products in the future? We have to create a new law for them as well? And number two, Chair, the presenter, you mentioned that tobacco is currently not socially acceptable. I hope you know that this was not always the case. There were times in our country when if you were a smoker, you were more respected. And young people wanted to smoke tobacco to be like adults whom they admire. We don't know if this will be the case about vapes in the future. If tomorrow, more information about the health harms is discovered. What would be your comment on this? Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Peko. She disappeared.
I am here, Chair. It was the problem of my phone freezing. I am here connected, Chair Person. Good evening to you, the presenter and the honorable members in the platform. Chair, my apologies for the delay to the presenter. Let's appreciate that he is here with us making such a presentation. I have some comments to make, Chair. Some will be comments and few questions. To the presenter, I am trying to understand because. He is suggesting that vape products be made affordable than smoking products. Am I wrong if I conclude by saying he is promoting his own products against tobacco products? Also to say, does that recommendation not lead to. Vape products being more attractive to younger ones if they are made to be affordable? He is also saying they are not selling to schoolchildren. Is that the case, Chair, when most vape shops. Are found near universities and schools recently? That's what I have just established, that there are more vape shops. Near universities, which I think that is really attracting the young ones. Also to the presenter, I would say, if he says vape products are not causing harm. Can he recommend those products to his own family and children if they do not cause harm? To me. I think vape products also contain nicotine. That nicotine can cause harm. If it can cause harm, that is the same as tobacco products. And my complete statement would be to say, who wrongs do not make a right? Because in his statement, he is saying. We may be by banning this or by regulating this industry, we are promoting illicit trading. Which is not the case, but I don't think it is correct to always fight the introduction of these regulations. Citing the issue of illicit trading. Illicit trading is a challenge also. But the Department of Health is not the only player in that field. SARS is there, SARS is there, everyone must play his or her own role to fight illicit trading. We are also against illicit trading because those people are selling illegally. Also, Chair, if he says forty-six years ago, he was smoking. And now he is on vaping. When he was smoking, that also attracted younger ones and non-smokers. Because an adult sometimes is a role player to others. That is also going to happen regarding these vape products. Because if a younger one sees me vaping, he will say, if that mama is vaping, let me vape also. I think, Chair, the issue of harm, harm is harm, less or otherwise. But harm is harm if tobacco products are seen to be harmful, even vapes are harmful. In tobacco, we say, there's nicotine, there's nicotine also in the vape products. And that nicotine that is there. I think it should be prescribed by a doctor that why it is dangerous to sell to anyone without a prescription. That's my take, Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay, I noticed that there are two more hands that came up after we've taken the list. I take it that honorable members had the challenges with their gadgets. Honorable Dr. Leppe, you then will be followed by Honorable Mare. Honorable Dr. Leppe. Dr. Leppe, are you available? This is your space now. Dr. Letrappe, are you available? This is your space now. Honorable Mare, come through, thank you.
Can you hear me now, Chair?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you. Come.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my first question is about the environmental impact of non-disposable vapes. Because they have components that are not reusable, the cartridges, for example. What are you doing in your company? Are you offering any recycling in your company? I understand the massive impact of disposable vapes because it's the whole contraption. Which would be the battery, the nicotine container, et cetera. But even the non-disposable vapes have an impact on the environment. What is your company doing about that? The second question is, do you have any suggestions for how we curb youth uptake? Because that is the major issue globally that people worry about. And in terms of displays, what are your thoughts about displays being allowed only inside the store? And the stores being specialized stores that are licensed and the employees need to be trained in terms of what they are offering? So the issue of canceling appropriate use, et cetera, should be something that gets done as well. Lastly, what are your comments on advertising? Uh because we we've got to find a media where it can be product advertising. And 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 I understand when people talk about new technologies, et cetera. But if we focus on people who smoke, there could be mechanisms of reaching those without reaching the others who don't smoke or youth. What would be your suggestion with regard to that? Thank you, Chair.
The last hand is Honorable Mare.
Thank you so much, Chairperson. Uh greetings to everyone on the on the group here. And I I want to say thank you for the presenter. Um, the question that I would like to ask, I was listening to the the presenter, I just want to know, can you get addicted to vaping? Because um you see a lot of children, and even though the gentleman said that, you know what, uh the health risk is not so much, I just would like to know exactly what is the health risk about this? Because you see, before the vaping, there was this oka 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 pipe, yeah? And then the children will give it from the one to the other one and it will go around the group. But I see the same thing is happening to the oka to this vaping thing, yeah? The children will walk down the street on the way to school and the one will give it to the other one, you know, from the one mouth to the other one. I just want to know, is there any um health risks concern this thing? Because I know with the oka pipe, a lot of children got infections in the mouths uh because of this pipe that they used to use. I just want to know what is the health risk on that? And it is true what the gentleman is saying that you see on TikTok and all the social media about how the lungs of these people are collapsing. Um, and did anyone do a a a a a uh health analyst to see if this thing is really addictive, is this thing um uh collapsing the lungs, what is really the 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 thing of this vapes? And I want to understand what is the difference between a rechargeable vape and the one that you can throw away? The reason why I'm asking this is because I have two, I have a daughter and a son, and these two is using this vape thingy kiss. And then you will see when you want to charge your phone, this thing is on the phone, is on the charger, you know? So I want to know, is there a difference? Because how can you charge something and then smoke it and it's like there's nothing wrong? I I need to understand because I'm not a smoker, I don't know what it is to smoke a cigarette or anything. Um, that is the one thing that I also would like to know. The gentleman was saying that there are edible shops that is available everywhere, um and everyone knows about it. But in that very edible shops, these people are selling these vapes um at these shops. Um, what are the 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 presenters saying about that? Because it seems like the vape is the end thing. Um, and then the thing I also would like to understand, um, Chairperson, is that these illicit cigarettes are cheaper than the normal prices. Is it a sign that the tobacco companies are overcharging the people for cigarettes? Because we're not just having a problem with illicit cigarettes. We have a problem with counterfeit goods, where people are spending millions of rands. And when SARS and the police go and raid dispensaries, they take millions of rands of counterfeit goods to Johannesburg or Durban, wherever the case would be. So this is not just a cigarette problem, it is a national problem where we scheme with counterfeit things. And it's coming illegally into the country and it's been solved in the country. Um, so I might be asking the question, is the tobacco company then overcharging? Because how come you get a place that is selling cheaper cigarettes? And is the cheaper cigarettes more harmful to the people than the ordinary prices of cigarettes? Um, the 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 last question I want to ask, Chairperson, is that every year you will see during January, December, February, you will see in Cape Town, there will be fires in the mountain. And you will hear the presenter on TV say that someone threw a cigarette um on the ground and it started this fire. Uh because you know that Cape Town is known for the winds. So I want to know if this um vape gets extremely hot, say it's lying in the sun for a few days, do can that can that vape start a fire um when it gets extreme heat? Um, or is it just finished when it's a must have started somehow? I just need to understand that. But my main concern is this, that um it's true what the gentleman is saying is that these edible shops is everywhere and I have a concern because I'm in the Department of Social Development and I spoke to the minister and everyone about this thing. It is sweets that they are selling, jelly tots and all different types of sweets that you can't even recognize, it is it is cannabis. Uh, and for that sweets to go to schools is going to be a massive disaster. So I want to agree on that one thing what the gentleman was saying. But I just need to understand these vapes, what health risks is it having to the people and the children? Because it's more like a fashionable thing, walking down the street, blowing this thing like it is now. You are more expensive because you're not smoking a cigarette, you know, it is like the thing that the children are doing now. But then they are also exchanging it to one another as they are going along. Um, thank you so much, Chairperson.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, on my side, Mr. Perry, I just wanted to add what my concerns are. Uh, you said in your presentation that you are now tobacco free for ten years. Uh, I suppose you mean you are not using cigarette but you are on vapes. Uh, so but the bottom line is that you are still a nicotine user. So to complete that sentence, that there is, in fact, I would end with that part, to say there is still nicotine in the vape too. Uh, I actually note your comment to say, can we maybe have a regulation that talks about nicotine strength reduced from five to three percent? I would imagine those who would be really interested to see that happen, you will welcome that suggestion. I was happy when I heard you saying, ban all single-use disposable vapes. And you have added something that was actually very important to me, massive harm to the environment. Since we started this meeting, I have then since made a contact with the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee or Fisheries, Forests and Environment, because I think I need to speak to her with regards to your contribution. I would have wanted you to go on further to say, you also want to ban the the old flavor. Because if 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 it is fair, somebody educated me that nicotine is not a bad taste, not a good taste, therefore you want to cover it with what is currently there, menthol and then mint. Why why would you want to go crepes, vanilla, strawberry unless you are really going to for a younger market? And in fact, somebody presented last week to us that since we allowed the pressure of young people asking for flavored condoms, so too we should allow for flavored vapes. Because it's almost, you are actually using that similarity. Immediately, I think to you, you want to keep vapes that are mint and menthol. Somebody would like to agree with you, but once you then you want to go to crepes, vanilla, strawberry. You are definitely attracting another population that has never been there. So I would have thought, I would really support some of these, but this issue of vapes uh having these flavors is a really big problem. Let us accept, uh, Mr. Perry, what we already have. Because the health act is a composite act that has got too many programs. And I I don't think we we can, we should really make the statement that you made because we can't be able to regulate all nicotine products under this bill with some level of differentiation, I mean whether vapes or tobacco or cigarette, there's there's nicotine there. So the common denominator point is that there's nicotine. So you just have to have a level of differentiation. So we can't, in fact, there are some of the people who came in like yourself to say, please regulate us. We are operating very freely and sometimes we know we are not doing well. So we we can't delay, because, Mr. Perry, so just go and separate and have a different bill for tobacco products and different ones for vapes. We'll look at the, the common denominator here is nicotine. And then the industry, we really wish, want to support the industry to start operating within the law. So let's just remove this notion that we should have had this. And I mean, the health acts as an example, is a program, it has got multiple programs. We can't say, no, the health actually have had one dealing with cancer and another health act dealing with HIV, another health act dealing with the training of healthcare professionals, all in one umbrella. So this is a very minute uh process we are talking about combining tobacco products and electricity delivery systems. Not going to be possible to separate. You might have wished that, but it's going to delay the process and it's necessarily so. And there's not too many people who would agree with that type of uh 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 viewpoint. Can you assist us then with your responses on these uh points? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lomo. Now, unfortunately, these questions have taken longer than my actual presentation, which would be impossible to answer everything. Um, we've actually already two minutes away from from the end of my presentation allocation, including answers, but and there and there are a lot of questions. I've got four pages, which unfortunately there's simply no way to address. So if I I'm going to try and run backwards um just with the with with the ones that are fresher in my mind, although I have uh used a program to record all the questions, I could look at them. So the first thing I I'd like to address is the issue of nicotine and the misconception that nicotine is bad for you. Nicotine is addictive. It's common in cigarettes and it's common in vapes and it's addictive. But it is not bad for you. The fact is that almost all of you have consumed nicotine at some point in the last month. All of you, because trace elements are even found in some vegetables. So nicotine itself is not harmful. People think that it's nicotine that's killing people. It's not. It's the combustion, it's the cigarette smoke, it's a tar, it's a carbon monoxide, and it's the carcinogens found in cigarette smoke. And the same goes for the hooker that the that the one lady uh mentioned. It's the combustion that kills people. It's the combustion that causes smokers to have a hoarse voice. It's the combustion that results in people getting diseases that cause death. So I really need to dispel this. And I also did have a disclaimer when I started off saying that I'm not a scientist and I'm not a doctor. You have two very qualified doctors on your committee. There are a lot of questions here that you addressed to me that just from a from 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 a medical standpoint, both those doctors could give you the the medical um uh their medical uh opinion on 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 these issues that have to do with it. And additionally, Kurt Yaya also addressed certain issues. He has a lot of research material available that the committee could ask for, but I'm not a medical doctor, I'm not a scientist. Some of these questions that have been asked of me, I'm I'm a businessman and 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 I'm a pilot. If you ask me about flying, I could tell you how an aeroplane stays airborne. But when it comes to the science, I cannot tell you, but there are certain things I can tell you. So, Dr. Lomo, I'm gonna go back to your question about flavors. If you go, if if you see the customers walking into our shops, firstly, as I said, they're all adults. We have customers who are in their sixties and seventies walking in and they all use flavors. The problem is you need to you need to distinguish between children who who may vape and they have certain flavors that might attract them, whatever that might be. But the fact is that every single adult who has made the conscious decision to stop smoking and start vaping because of the the lack of harm reduction, do it, they use flavors to keep themselves there. They don't want tobacco, they don't want mint. The fact is, you could take alcohol then and use the same thing. Why don't you just have a have a plain version of alcohol? And not have all the flavors in it. You know how bad alcohol is. So as far as nicotine goes, I mean, as far as flavors go, this argument of of saying that it's targeting children, that you shouldn't have it for adults, all that you will have is you will have all these adults, if you give them um vape flavors, or you take the flavors away, they will go back to smoking. They've got no reason to use vapes because it will be unpleasant. They're not just gonna stop, they will go back to smoking. So you're just gonna be reversing the harm. Um, okay, some, then then I was asked, I've been tobacco free for ten years, it's actually twelve years, yet I'm still using nicotine. I believe I answered that wh- when I gave the expl- explanation that, yes, I use nicotine. I'm addicted to nicotine. I have the business. And I do test samples, we do, so I'm using nicotine all the time. But the fact is, if I sell my business one day, I will be able to stop. It's not that difficult. I've done it before where I had to. I've I stopped nicotine once for two weeks because I had to. I'm not gonna say why, but I had to just stop for two weeks and it wasn't difficult to do. Um, harm from vapes for children, that's another question I've got, harm from vapes for children. Okay, so we're talking about children again and potential harm, and and someone asked me a question, very relevant question, they said, yes, I've got two children, I've got a daughter that's twenty-three and I've got a son that's twenty-one. And my son, when he was at boarding school in Grahamstown, I found out that my son was smoking cigarettes and smoking marijuana at the age of sixteen. So I made the conscious decision to give him vapes on the condition that he stops smoking combustible cigarettes and he stops smoking combustible marijuana. And I can tell you, I'm not the only parent that's had this dilemma. My son today, he still vapes, but he doesn't use marijuana, he doesn't smoke cigarettes. And he hasn't since I put him on vaping. So it's it's two huge evils versus something I don't see as being too evil. Yes, at some point he's gonna have to stop, but he's no longer using combustible products. So, yes, I made the conscious decision as an adult to get my child off. And I happen to know a very senior official in the Department of Health who I had a conversation with, not on this platform, who admitted to me she was having the same problem with her son as well. So um it it it's not something that's unique to myself or it it's very prevalent. Um, okay, um, can vapes cause fire? Vapes cannot cause fire. A a a vape product is a um, it has a battery inside of it. It's not something that has ignition. So it does heat a coil, but the way in the beginning, and I was once again talking about the safety of vape products and how they've evolved, way in the beginning, vape products had very big batteries, there were even products called mech marts, um which were very dangerous. And there were situations where a vape a vape battery actually overheated um and it caught fire. But this industry has involved so much, vape products have become much smaller, the vape devices? No, they cannot cause it. Now, what I'd like to do is take the opportunity, I was, I said I would show everyone uh the difference between um a single-use disposable and a and a and a vape that 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 is not a single-use disposable. So what I'm ho- holding here is a single-use disposal. This is a device that has a battery. And when this product is finished, which on something like this, I'm not even sure how much uh illiquid it holds, this is thrown away. You cannot recharge it. And even if you could recharge it, when it's empty, you throw it away. And inside here, the bottom half of this device is a battery. This this device will last one to two days, then you throw this device away with the battery. What I'm showing you now is what's known as it's it's a rechargeable device, but it's not a single-use. Because what happens is this is the battery. When this is empty, you throw this away. This is just plastic. It's nothing else. Once the liquid's gone, there's plastic. Once the liquid's gone, there's plastic inside here and there's a very small coil. And this can be recycled. This will be reused and reused and reused for one, two, three years. This is the battery, it never gets thrown away. The other thing about something like this, you have a child, which one's easier to hide? This, I mean, look at the size compared to my hand, gone, easy to hide. Take a look at this one, you're not going to hide that so easily. And additionally, this is going to be a lot more expensive. This sells for about 90 rand. This as a kit will sell somewhere around 250 rand. Also not that affordable for kids that are maybe clubbing together and buying vapes. Then another question that I want to get to was the issue of the TikTok videos, and I think this is very relevant. We have people like Dr. Funzal Slubbin in Cape Town starting to bring up popcorn lung again. Popcorn lung has never happened to anyone vaping. There was an ingredient way, way in the beginning that was in a vanilla, that was in the vanilla flavor that was known to cause popcorn lung. That disappeared so long ago and nobody has ever got popcorn lung from vaping. So you see these videos on TikTok and it shows people and they say, oh, I was vaping and my lungs filled with liquid or this one was vaping and she's dying, whatever. And you know what always comes out? Like Ivali. They are using cannabis vapes. Our industry is not a cannabis vaping industry, it's a nicotine vaping industry. So vitamin E acetate was used to thicken those cannabis vapes in America. And wherever you see someone on TikTok claiming that they got sick, they were either former cigarette smokers, but primarily they're marijuana users. And whenever someone goes back, you find out this person was actually a drug addict, they were using marijuana. So it's not vapes are not making people sick. And I previously said that I've had over 100,000 customers in my business come through our doors and buy from us. If you went to a restaurant and you had a bad meal, you'd go and tell the restaurant owner. Do you think people wouldn't come back to us and say, I bought a vape, I'm getting sick? Never had it happen, over 100,000 customers. Cigarette companies overcharging? Cigarette companies aren't overcharging. The fact is, the illicit trade is not paying the excise tax. You can buy a pack of cigarettes from the illicit trade for less than the excise tax. That's, so cigarette companies are not charging a lot for cigarettes, but in my opinion, that excise tax should be way, way lower. Because cigarettes are cheap in this country and that's why we will struggle to be able to compete with the success in Europe. Because in a place like the UK, a pack of cigarettes costs 15 pounds. In South Africa, you could buy an illicit pack of cigarettes for $1. So vapes are less expensive or comparably the same price in the UK as cigarettes. So it's easy to make the decision to switch from one to the other. But in South Africa, that's not the case. When you're competing with an 18 rand pack of cigarettes, we can't compete. Our excise tax alone, what Treasury did to the vaping industry is, has already put us under serious financial pressure. It is a ridiculous level of taxation where they took illiquid and the tax exceeds the, what we were selling the illiquid for in the first place. Now I'm going to go back to the beginning and see if I can address some of the other questions. Just give me one second. Okay, the retail display ban, how would that affect us? So I do understand where this comes from. And this is also another reason that I've said, and Dr. Loma, I'm responding to something that you said, where you're saying, why should we separate the vaping industry from the cigarette industry? A retail, a retail display van on the cigarette industry won't have much of an effect. People know what brand they smoke, they know what cigarettes are, they're simple products. They're going to walk up to their local supermarket and they're going to say, okay, give me a pack of this or give me a pack of that. It's a simple thing, but when it comes to vape shops, and I believe another question also is related to this, where if we had, we have dedicated vape shops. From outside, a lot of them are within shopping malls, inside brick and mortar, it's a secure area. So let's say the committee decides, okay, cover your windows, put a cover over your window so that children cannot see inside. That's fine with us, but don't tell us to hide our vape products because how are we able to educate? If people come in and they're new products and safer products and maybe new technologies and safer technologies, how are we able to educate people if they walk in and they can't see what we have? We're not allowed to advertise, we're not allowed to educate, how do we sell our products? So that also comes back to the question with that someone else, and I'm just trying to combine my answer with certain things is, why do you say that you're going to go out of business? What, you know, that this is going to affect you? So I could tell you that the excise tax alone has put serious pressure on us and it has grown the illicit markets. I gave you an example of how the illicit market's affecting us. And our turnover as vape right, we're the largest vape company in South Africa, is down 10% from last year. And the main reason is because we simply cannot compete with the illicit market and the way it's growing. And people are moving away from regular vape products and they're going to disposables for the ease of access. And we're not able to compete on disposables because we are a legally compliant company that imports our products and pays our excise tax. And we pay our vet, we pay our company tax and other people are not doing it. So that is, that is, so my issue on the fact that you're saying hide it, I understand you're going to a spa, pick and pay a checkers and a kid's walking with their family and they go past the cigarette counter, yes, they see the cigarettes, they see the vapes. But those children are not in my vape shop, so why should we be forced to hide our products? As far as the separate legislation, I do understand it creates predicament for this committee, specifically for those who would like to see this ball going through very quickly. But you know, you wouldn't legislate motorbikes and motorcars under the same legislation as far as seat belts are concerned. Because there are no seat belts, it's a different level of danger, it's a different level of use. There are many examples that one could give us to why vaping is just so different to cigarettes and the primary reason is combustion. Okay, so I've addressed the issue once again of people landing in hospital, where there are articles about people landing in hospital from vaping. They weren't vaping regular vapes. This also goes back to the illicit trade. We have an ISO seven laboratory, I'd actually love to share the picture of our laboratory where you can see how we work in our laboratory and the level of cleanliness that we use. Illicit vapes, there's no quality control, there's no knowing where the ingredients came from. It's, so all those people getting sick, they're either getting sick from marijuana vape, so they're getting sick from something that's made in someone's garage. Dr. Letla P asked about what, I believe, about what we are doing for the environment, as far as environment is concerned. So vape rights is registered with SOIC. We, our PLO, or I think it's PR O PLO, is Iwasa. You go to any vape right shop, there's a bin which encourages people to return their disposable vapes. And we are doing as much as we can. We obviously cannot force someone to, to return their disposable vape to a vape right shop or to dispose of it properly. If you take the illicit market and you take the kids, first thing they're going to do is try to get rid of the vape as quickly as possible. So it's a huge problem. And I really appreciate Dr. Loma that you've been proactive on this and you've contacted DFFE because this is a major issue to me. You know, I live at the coast, I've, you know, I've got nowhere to dispose of anything like a battery and plenty of other people in the same predicaments. And to be honest, I'm using them because I'm sampling them, but there are plenty of common users and it's a major issue for the environment. You're not taking anyone's rights away by getting rid of single-use disposables. There are plenty of other options. It's actually going to be less expensive for someone to use a more environmentally friendly option. But what you are going to do is you're going to take the very cheap ones away from the very outlets that are selling to kids. Somebody else asked me, where are the children getting their vapes from? I'll tell you where the children are getting their vapes from. They're getting it from FMCG retailers. They get, I'm not going to mention individual brands, but they're getting it from supermarkets, they're walking up to the cigarette aisle. There's no, there's no legal obligation for those people to check for IDs. Because there's no legal age limits and I've implored you to please act on the age limit immediately. It can be done outside of this ball, you will have our full support. They're getting it from four courts, they're getting it from petrol stations, they're getting it from China malls, they're getting it from all the little stores, convenience stores, cafes, as you like to call them. There are plenty of sources for them to get these vapes, very easy, the same way we used to get cigarettes when we were children. And I'm sure you're all fully aware that the majority of people that actually smoked cigarettes started before they were 18, I think it's 90%. The other problem you have is when you tell children not to vape, when you keep pushing this so hard and you say, don't vape, don't vape, don't vape, it's like holding up a red flag to a bull. They're going to say, oh, what is this thing that they don't want me to do? What are children going to do? They're curious. So it's a huge problem. And if, and if children who are vaping weren't vaping, they'd be smoking cigarettes. So it's actually an ethical dilemma and I personally don't know how to answer it and I don't think anyone else here can. You will not stop children doing what they want to do. Tell them not to do it, they will do it, they will find a way to do it. So we have a problem. But maybe someone else asked, how do we get the poorest of the poor, give them the option of converting to vaping from smoking? How do we get people who are smoking to start vaping? And how do we get vapers potentially to quit? And unfortunately, that potentially takes the excise tax that we're paying, being diverted into clinics so that we can actually, like the UK did, you know, I don't want to quote the UK program, but this is something that US committee could investigate. I believe the UK gave over a million smokers vapes to get them off smoking. I don't want to quote the number, but there was a program and I might be way off on the figure, but I believe the UK did something like it and that's what this industry needs to do. And that's what this committee and the Department of Health need to do. Investigate, use the doctors on your committee to get a real, genuine medical opinion on harm reduction and at least stop people from dying from something. Get them off combustible products and get them onto non-combustible products where people are not dying.
You have there five minutes to.
I know, I know, and that's what I say, I mean, I've got four pages here, so I'm going to see if there's anything. Okay, risks for business with our new ball, with a new ball. I can tell you now, a flavor ban and I'm out of business. You're going to shut down the legal vape industry, all you're going to have left is an illicit trade and then you've lost control. You've got no control over, over product that's going to be coming into this country. You've got no control over cigarettes. I've shown you that you've got no control over the cannabis industry, you're going to have no control over the illicit trade. If you ban flavors, adults will either go back to smoking or you're going to have an illicit trade, they're actually going to get their products. You can go to Australia right now where only pharmacies are supposed to dispense vape products. You can go into any store, any store, and behind the counter, they're going to have vape products. It's just not the way to deal with things and flavors are essential to keeping adults motivated to stay off returning to cigarettes. It is very easy to go back to cigarettes. As I said, I can choose anything I want, I don't have a limit. I have my particular flavors and these flavors have driven me and kept me off returning to smoking cigarettes for 12 years. Size of the illegal market? I think you'd be very surprised. I think you'd be very surprised. I have no figures and you talk about SARS, you talk about Saps and getting them involved. I have tried to advise Saps and SARS about companies I suspect of being illicit. And I get absolutely no feedback. It's like I'm wasting my time. It's so, so really, it's never going to happen. It's never going to happen. It requires a task team. If you cannot control the illicit cigarette trade, you're never going to control the, well, okay, illicit cigarettes is a lot easier. They just walk them over the border and in fact, most of it is actually made in South Africa. You're just going to have no control. So I already believe that this needs workshops potentially. And someone said, someone actually asked about our industry potentially working with the portfolio committee or creating a workshop. And I really believe that's what's needed. You need to take people like ourselves who are genuinely not selling to children and who really believe in what the vape product is. Let's get the science from the right people, let's get the medical, certain medical doctors involved. And it's not about saying, is vaping on its own good or bad? It's about saying vaping versus smoking. One kills, one doesn't. So yes, I'd be more than happy to work with you through VIPASSA, of course, I am a board member of VIPASSA, but I'm not representing VIPASSA today. But we would happily and proactively assist in putting together programs to facilitate that. Separate legislation, they'd be separates. Okay, one, one question was about Sweden and that I've visited Sweden, I have not visited Sweden. I've simply closely followed Kurt Yaya and the research he's done, the very good work he's done, the facts that he has. And he educated me on what's going on in Sweden. So I simply say that Sweden has the most successful harm reduction model in the world. They've reduced, I believe their smoking rate is now approaching 4%, the most adults, which is phenomenal. And they've done that by using harm reduction. So no, I haven't visited Sweden, but I do recommend that the committee potentially visit Sweden and possibly even the UK. Chair, I know I've missed a ton of questions. I mean, as you can see, I've got pages and pages. Is there anything specific, I know my time's run out now, is there anything specific that anyone has that urgently needs to be addressed? Or alternatively, you're more than welcome to email me. And anyone that has a question that they really feel needs to be addressed, I'm more than happy to answer by email.
There won't be new questions, Perry, but if there are issues that we have not completed to answer, please write them back to us, okay?
Okay, I'll do that, Dr. Long.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Your presentation was just but one of many that we are still going to engage with. But we thank you for coming into this portfolio committee and presenting your case. And we have, I've been listening to you and we will then use some of the things that you presented to us to assist us in fine tuning what you have presented to us. You are very persuasive, you say bicycle and a motor car, but one will tell you, both of them are instruments to take me from point A to point B. So there's some commonality, look at the denominator more than look at their differences, okay? Thank you very much, Dr. Parkman, we'll meet you some other time, thanks.
Thank you, committee.
We are now welcoming another presentation from Professor Mark. Professor Mark, welcome with your team. You are a Leonard professor from Sam University of Stellenbosch. We'll give you this opportunity to brief us from now for another 30 minutes. And then thereafter, you will have to listen to the members asking you questions, then you'll then come back and respond to them. For now, we'll allow you to start and your 30 minutes starts now. Thank you very much, I can see your presentation is already on the platform.
Thank you, Dr. Lomo, can you hear me?
Thank you, Dr. Glomo. Can you hear me and can you see me? I think the light may not be good where I am. Um.
You can see your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you for um welcoming me here. Um so yes, I'm attached to two universities, the University of Stellenbosch and the Australia National University. I do not represent their views in this presentation, but I am saying that those are my affiliated universities. And I'm also a uh social worker and health coach in private practice. Um and so my views are based not only on my academic work, but also on my practice work as a uh allowed health professional and as a health coach. Um just so that people understand where I'm coming from. I've been working in the field of harm reduction for over ten years, um mostly in the area of drug use. And uh and so my involvement in tobacco harm reduction is much more recent. But it is a substance and therefore I think it, it follows the same logic and so I'm gonna present in that light. I think, you know, I wanted to begin uh with just talking about what harm reduction is because I think it's a term that's been thrown around even today, but it hasn't been clarified. And I think it's only fair to just say what we mean when we talk about harm reduction. So there are many components of harm reduction. The first is that it prioritizes the well-being of the individual over and above the notion of abstinence. So it's saying, what does an individual need to be well? And that is the priority. Uh we talk about it in harm reduction as meeting the person where they are at. The second thing about harm reduction is that it looks for practical solutions that produce the negative health impacts of it could be uh any form of substance, it could be driving badly, it could be uh even if I think about it, it could be corporal punishment is harmful, right? So what do we do practically to reduce harms? And then it does allow for autonomy and choice. In other words, the individual has to be able to make their own decision because if we impose decisions on people, we lose their ability to change. And then lastly, it really prioritizes the lived realities of people. So if we are to talk about what we do with tobacco, we've got to understand what it means for the people that are tobacco users. So how do we then understand um this in relation to tobacco use? A couple of things, right? We have to understand firstly that tobacco because of both the tobacco in this case, but the nicotine in particular, uh does create dependencies. And I'll get on to whether tobacco, whether nicotine is harmful or not in a minute, right? And so because of that, there are physical withdrawals from nicotine and tobacco in this case uh which need to be taken seriously. So there is that component. But we also have to understand why people smoke in the first place and there are many, many reasons. Uh it could be because it's sort of fashionable and that came up in the last session. It could be uh because, you know, it looks nice to other two people that are smoking, I'm not sure. But in many cases, it is a stress response. It allows people to manage their anxiety. And it is therefore also a coping mechanism. It allows for emotional regulation. Uh you'll find many people that are smokers are dealing with a lot of stress. And they see a cigarette, and I heard this last night at a book launch, as a breathing space. I've also heard people in various forums uh with mental health problems, particularly ADHD, saying that without cigarettes, they are not coping at all because it does have, you know, a stimulant effect. So we need to understand the reasons for, for use in the first place. In the space of harm reduction, we always look at who is the most vulnerable and that is who we focus on. And in the case of cigarette smoking, we need to say that many, many people that are still smoking cigarettes, perhaps the people that don't have access to the kinds of devices that were presented in the, in the, in the, in the previous um presentation, but also people who are undergoing much more stress than others are marginalized groupings. I'm talking about, you know, even if you walk in the street, you see homeless people, they're picking up the cigarette butts that have been left behind by other people, uh people from low income backgrounds dealing with a lot of stress. Uh people with mental health problems, I've already spoken to that. So if we think about harm reduction in that light, we've got to understand that we are also trying to find solutions for marginal people who otherwise are not receiving the proper care and attention that they need, particularly in relation to health. So what does this look like if we say we are looking for less harmful solutions, which is what harm reduction is about? It's about saying, how do we reduce the harms associated in this case with tobacco smoking? And the one way to do that, as we do in other fields of substance use, is to say, what is the substitute? So if you say to a person that's smoking cigarettes, you say to them, what is it that you, in this case, addicted to? They'll say maybe both of these or one of these. They'll say, one, it's the nicotine. And two, it's the modality. In other words, the smoking. Some people will say one or the other, uh but we have to listen to what it is. But for the most part, people will be addicted to the nicotine. Whether or not the modality is part of it is a conversation you have with your individual person, your individual patient, if we're talking about a healthcare frame. So these are the kinds of ways that I would like to understand the transitioning. We get traditional smoking, cigarettes, very high health risks. And that's because of the carcinogenics that are associated with tobacco, right? Um we know that cigarettes are responsible for cancer, heart disease, stroke, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. Not the nicotine, but the tobacco. I'll get on to tobacco harms just now. And then we move to the possibility of nicotine replacements. So the patches, gums, lusceners and all of that, which we've already had on the market for, for some time, they have not been terribly successful. And then we have safer alternatives, which are vapes, snooze, which is the pouches that we put in our, in our uh top lip. Um the non-combustible tobacco, because we've heard already from the previous speaker that the major harm of cigarettes is in the combusting. And we know that these alternatives are far safer because they have far less toxins. I will talk about nicotine in a minute and, and whether it is harmless or not. And so what that allows for these safe alternatives is for a gradual reduction in smoking cigarettes. And that is where the Swedish case has been referred to many times. It's not the only one. We see similar things in, 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 in other parts of the world where a harm reduction approach has been taken to tobac- tobacco. But we do see that it does lead to cigarette cessation far more effectively than previous forms of nicotine replacement, which are on the market. So when we talk about the technologies of harm reduction, we're not just talking, by the way, about uh e-cigarettes or vapes, we're also talking about the oral nicotine pouches. We're talking about the heat-not-burn products, which prevent the combusting. So I wanted to put it out there so people understand that it's not simply just the vapes that we're talking about. There are more things. In this particular regulation, it's mainly uh focused on vapes, but we need to understand that nicotine replacement comes in various different forms. Now, there is a lot of evidence and this is to the point uh of the previous uh presentation, people asking about nicotine. What do we know about nicotine? We know from a range of different scientific um uh research uh processes across the globe with various different methodologies, that nicotine alone possess, presents a substantially lower health risk than combustible tobacco. And we've seen how countries such as the UK, but not only the UK, therefore have supported the move towards pure nicotine rather than tobacco products that are combustible. Uh so nicotine products do have harmful compounds. They do. I'm not gonna deny that, right? Um uh but they are by no means anywhere near as harmful as the combustible tobacco. So what does nicotine do that's harmful? I'm just gonna raise this because people are gonna ask it. Uh it can raise your heart rate, it can raise your blood pressure. Uh that's basically the main harms of nicotine, but they are far, far less uh than the toxins that are created from burning tobacco. Nicotine on its own is really, really not that unsafe. Yes, it can raise your blood pressure. Yes, it can also uh increase your heart, heart rate. But long term, does it do any substantive damage? It doesn't seem like it does. So if we are to look towards harm reduction, what we're really doing is we're saying, let's find people-centered politic, polit- policies for tobacco use. That is really what harm reduction is about. It's about saying, let's focus on the people that are most affected. So if I was to use an analogy, for example, I work in the space of, of opiate use. And I can say, you know, I work mainly with homeless heroin users. What do we do to reduce the harms of heroin? We look for a substitute and that substitute is a medical opiate, which is highly regulated, which has a longer half-life, which means that people aren't going around looking for a fix every four to six hours. And it can be downtached rated and uptached rated according to need. So it's a much, much safer option, right? If we're looking at tobacco harm reduction, we're saying the individual does have choice because at the end of the day, if we don't look at individual choice, and I say this as somebody that works in the health space, we've lost that person altogether. If we say to somebody, just stop smoking, it's not gonna happen. You know, they're gonna hide it and then once they hide it, we're playing soccer in the dark. We're not playing soccer in the light. If we are people-centered, we need to be able to say, these are alternatives. Without alternatives, it's unlikely that people are going to simply just seize from any substance. We know this with alcohol. If I was to say to anybody here, please stop having sugar in your diet, you will say to me, okay, if I stop having sugar, what am I gonna have so that I, I taste that sweetness? They're not gonna say raw honey or a Gave syrup or maybe date syrup or something, right? But if I say nothing, people will stick with sugar. It's the same with any other substance. And we need to focus on ultimately what are the long-term health outcomes. And we know for a fact that nicotine on its own is by far less harmful, if harmful at all, in comparison with combustible cigarettes. Now, this does not mean that there aren't major quandaries in relation to tobacco harm reduction. There are debates, there are issues, there are problems which have been raised and I'm gonna speak about them because they're gonna come up anyway in the conversation. The most important one that comes up is the issue of young people. What does it mean for young people if we offer these alternatives, all these substitutes, all these non-combustible forms of getting nicotine into our bodies? What does that mean for young people? Well, here's the problem, right? If you're a young person and you are deciding, I'm gonna experiment, which most people when they're young do, what would you rather your young person has access to because they will experiment, right? The way to deal with the youth issue is precisely, much like the previous speaker was saying, to develop regulations around access to these products. And I'm not gonna argue that this should be separate from the existing Tobacco Act. In fact, I think that these should be included in the current Tobacco Act. I'll talk about that in a second, right? The public health quandary is also about who's harmed and when are they harmed? And just think about this for a second. When we have combustible products, right? We are harming more than just the individual smoker. We are also harming other people too. So if we have a non-combustible product, we are also providing a public health uh product, which is, which is far less harmful. We then, of course, have to think about access and how people get access to these um, to these new products or these existing products, nicotine products. And that means looking at pricing, right? You know, because you don't wanna outprice it so that the vulnerable groupings that I've already spoken about cannot access um these, these products that are less harmful. And the other thing that we need to make sure is that we stop the misinformation. The misinformation that nicotine is as harmful as tobacco is. Nicotine is part of tobacco products, but on its own, it is less harmful. And we also need to stop the language that vapes and other nicotine-based products are a gateway to smoking nicotine, uh tobacco products. That has not been proven true at all. So what is really important in the public health harm reduction space is to make sure that the right information is given. Because I want to say this, the wrong information can also be very, very harmful. So too can the wrong legislation be harmful. So we talk about the harms of substances, but we also need to think about the harms of legislation. So what would it look like to include harm reduction into legislation? In this case, the legislation in relation to tobacco and um and other e- um cigarettes, other nicotine products. Well firstly, we'd need to look at what are the public health benefits. And there are many. The first would be that it reduces smoking-related disease and mortality rates significantly. Secondly, it's also a very pragmatic approach. It gives a solution. It acknowledges that abstinence has limitations and we all know that. When somebody tells us stop doing something without any alternative, the chances of that being successful are very, very, very low. So I'm gonna use the example of the heroin space again or the opiate space. We know that the abstinence-based programs that exist where people are told to stop, just stop, have a seven percent success rate, a far lower success rate than providing substitutes, which you can eventually downtouch it, right? And what this allows for, if we move in the harm reduction space, if we start talking about what we can bring in to reduce the harms by all, by, by providing alternatives to smoking, we then allow for stakeholder collaboration. We bring together into deliberated, deliberative um processes where people can debate, they can engage, they can ask questions, public health people, the industry, both the tobacco industry and those that are creating these alternative nicotine-based products and consumers, because consumers are very, very important. The people that actually use these products, both cigarettes and the alternative products. And in doing this, in having these stakeholder collaborations, we move away from a highly moralistic approach to one that says, let's engage, let's talk. The answers lie in deliberation. The answers lie in saying, what is less harmful? And if we do that, we then create regulations, laws, legislations that are less harmful, that meet the public and the individual where they're at and that provide alternatives and provide solutions. Now, these solutions, just by the way, are not just important for the user community. They are equally important for clinicians and practitioners such as myself. So if somebody comes into my practice and they say, I'm smoking forty six, forty cigarettes a day, but I know that I have a cardiac problem. And I've tried to smoke, to stop smoking, but I can't. And I say to them, we'll just do it, just stop. They're gonna walk out of my office and they never come back again. But if I say to them, let's see what alternatives are available that we can try, maybe that will work. That gives hope, that gives possibility. And it also leaves the person feeling less stigmatized than they were if they're simply told that everything that they're using is bad. And stigma, by the way, creates more harm than anything else. It, it, it actually, when you feel stigmatized, whatever style, substance you're using, you're probably likely to start using more, right? We know that punishment and stigma creates more harm. We know that if we send people to prison for using drugs, they come out and they use more. And in fact, they overdose, right? So these kinds of stances, these abstinence stances that don't offer an alternative are extremely harmful. Unintentionally, because what the drafters of this bill are trying to do is act in good conscience, is to reduce harms, is to stop harms. But the pragmatic approach to doing it may be missing. So in terms of the legislation under discussion, what do I think is important for us to consent, continue, I mean to consider? So firstly, we have to embrace. So firstly, we have to embrace what the scientific evidence is. And more and more evidence is coming out, which is stating that it is important to move towards smoke-free products, in other words, products that are non-combustible. And to understand what it is that nicotine does and doesn't do. We need to engage with the scientific evidence, and most of the scientific evidence is now pointing to the far less harmful outcomes of nicotine, if there are any at all, than tobacco. But this needs to continue. We need to continue doing research, and I'll tell you where where the research is missing at the moment and where we need to go. But what we know for a fact is that vapes are very effective in cessation, much more so than any of the uh patches or anything else with the nicolets that have been used up till now. Secondly, within the act, it is really important that we talk about harm reduction. And that harm reduction be woven into this act or the bill. And that in bringing in harm reduction, we also talk about how to regulate products based on their actual risk profile. So, for example, we know that we don't want people under the age of eighteen to be accessing any of these products, right? Because we know that ultimately there is a harm associated with nicotine. It's far, far less. It's probably negligible, but there is still a risk and there is still a harm, right? So how we deal with different population groupings can be accounted for within the same legislation. And then it is important for people that are in the legislative space, in the public health space, to monitor the outcomes of new legislation. And then to adjust policy according to what the outcomes are. Laws change, they get revised, but we need to make it as evidence-based as possible and as end-user-based as possible and as people-centered as possible. And then lastly, this keeps coming up. We need to protect youth while helping adults. And when I talk about helping adults, we've gotta say that the adults that we need to help are those that are using tobacco cigarettes because it's helping them cope, because it's reducing stress, because it's giving them a moment, because they may have social inadequacies and when they smoke, they feel that they can engage with others. But more importantly, we need to be helping those adults who have chronic illnesses that need to stop smoking combustible cigarettes. And if we don't give them an alternative, their health outcomes are going to be terrible, and we know this already. So my plea is for us to consider at least incorporating harm reduction into the legislation and also engaging with nicotine substitutes across the range. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Professor. Now, we are a professor in which you need in in the Stellenbosch.
Uh at Stellenbosch University, it's the Center for the Study of the Afterlife and Violence and Repro- and the Reproductive Que- Quest. It used to be called the Center for Intergenerational Trauma. Uh you would have probably heard of it in that in that way. And at the the Australian National University, this may be of more interest, Chair. Um I'm part of a a center which is called the Regulatory Network Institute. And that particular um department is actually concerned with regulation across the board. So I am involved in the regulatory space as well.
Okay, okay. Honorable members, here is the presentation that you're interested to interact with. I will then start recognizing the hands. This time around, I saw the head of Dr. Leroux first. Uh that would be number one. And the second hand is there, Honorable Van Staden. Uh honorable members, if you can raise your hand. Honorable Kumalo, you are number three. Uh Honorable Zungula, we are number four. Honorable Dr. Littape, we are number five. Let me see, Honorable Mare, you are number six. Honorable Sinne, we are number seven. Honorable Motubasi, we are number eight. Uh there's always a hand that failed to get up. Honorable Treco, are you able to raise your head? Honorable Shabango, we are number nine. Honorable Treco, are you able to raise your head wherever you are? Maybe not. Honorable members, let us follow the same practice. One, one, uh honorable member has asked a question. You then uh take over, started with Dr. Leroux, followed by Honorable Van Staden. The third, Honorable Kumalo. Fourth, Honorable Zungula. Five, Honorable Dr. Littape. Six, Honorable Mare. Seven, Honorable Sinne. Eight, Honorable Motubasi. Nine, Honorable Shabango. Thank you very much.
Professor Mark, thank you very much for your presentation. Very interesting perspectives and and particularly helpful. I think because I I think that the intention of this committee is to make sure that we and that there is as little harm as possible done to the South African population. And we we're trying to mitigate harms from smoking, we're trying to mitigate harms from vaping, we're trying to and mitigate harms to um families who live with smokers and people who 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 live in and work in bars and in restaurants. And so I think that that I think your approach is a very interesting and helpful one. And and I really do appreciate your perspective, and it's be, I think it's the first presentation that's been done in this way. And so thank you very much for that. And I I just had a few questions from your presentation. And and I know you speak about being in the in the um i- in the opioid harm reduction space, and you spoke about the success rate of pure abstinence versus medication. I didn't, I just wondered if you could give us a sense of what it's, I I assume that you're talking about medications like methadone as a way to redu- harm, reduce harm, just into t- t- in terms of success rate of the, so seven percent um peer stopping. I know it's not an easy thing to to get, so I know it's not gonna be a hundred percent success rate, but but what is the, with methadone and well, well-rounded programs, where are we getting with with people who are in opiate um uh re- uh harm reduction programs? How are things, what are the 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 figures there? I assume that we could e- expect fairly similar numbers, maybe um better in in the smoking space. And I I wondered, i- i- in terms of the, I don't know about the British um experiments, I know that they, it was mentioned by a previous speaker as well, don't don't know if you have the data in front of you, but but they used, they gave out vapes, I think particularly to pregnant women as a way to try and stop pregnant moms who are pregnant from smoking. And and I I don't know if you have any data on that, how successful that was, has there been any research done on that and on that harm reduction process? And uh one of the things that um the there's been criticism for from the Department of Health on is this idea of harm is harm. And um and I would just like to get your perspective on that sort of specific thing that's come out quite a lot in in the engagements in Nedlack. They've spoken quite a lot about harm is harm and we need to mitigate any harm. So um your perspective on that specific um approach that is being used. And then um i- from your perspective, um the harms that this legislation as it is currently put together might cause. So um uh um you said that you mentioned this legislation can also cause harm, and so I'd like to get a sense of of that and how you would, you mentioned that there's a few things that you'd like to bring in, like a harm reduction approach in the legislation, but are there any specific parts of the legislation that you think would cause harm? And and then finally, I I don't know if, just a sense of of the success of harm reduction in terms of, you said that vaping is is probably the most successful. I've seen some data. Could you give us a sense of um comparing uh pure abstinence with using nicotine patches, et cetera, et cetera, versus vaping, which has the, I suppose, you you s- I I've never heard the approach before, but the, not only the the nicotine replacement, but also the action of smoking, which is somehow a stress-relieving half that. If you could, if you have any data about the relative success rates of 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 cessation of smoking um in those three practices, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairperson, and thank you, Professor, for your presentation. It's much appreciated. I need two questions from my side. Um you've been speaking, speaking about the scientific research this evening. Can you please provide this committee with with scientific research in in this regard? And then my second question is, you are talking about the we need balanced regulations in our legislation, and I agree with you on that one. Would you say, do you then believe that the existing tobacco legislation is sufficient enough? And then we can just amend and strengthen the regulations to bring it to into to a more balanced perspective? Thank you, Chair.
Hello, thank you very much. May I request Honorable Kumalo that you stand down a bit? Uh maybe swap with Honorable Shabango. Honorable Shabango has written to me that she's gonna challenge the petition. That we allow her now, and then Honorable Kumalo will come last if your petition's fine. If that is fine with you, Honorable Shabango, thank you very much, Honorable Kumalo, for agreeing to swap. Uh Shabango, come now. Has your petri died, Honorable Shabango?
She's got a network, network problem, Chair. She's load shaded.
Okay, all right. I thought I was pulling it up in the event she's still able to. But I'll be updated if she's not able to complete it. Uh then let's follow the same, Honorable Kumalo, come through now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh Chair. Thank you, Professor, for your presentation, but I'm having some questions. You, you say harm reduction is a public health measure. Can you tell us which other instances where other harm reduction tools or meca- ma- medications are advertised to and targeted at children and even promoted by celebrities? Uh you talk about autonomy and choices as key to empowering individuals to make their own decisions. Could you address the deeply concerning direct targeting of young people through advertisements and marketing tactics that prompt initiation? How does this tactic equal empowerment? Lastly, Chair, uh the professor have said he, she's having a practice that belongs to to her. I want just to check, Chair, how many patients who are addicted to cigarette have you treated with weight in your practice? Thank you, Chair.
Um evening. Um thank you, Monique. Um thank you for the presentation. Um I think it's um it's good to hear um the other side that is talking about harm reduction. One of your slides spoke to the policies, um the there must be policies to prevent youth initiation. Practically, what do those policies look like? Um and to prevent youth initiation, particularly when it comes to the alternative products, because I think that's the fear that has been highlighted by majority or some of the members of the committee. Practically, what do those policies look like? Secondly, from your perspective, having read the bill, with your experience in terms of dealing with um the the smokers, is the current bill regulating products according to their risk profile? Or it uses a blanket approach regardless of the different products as well as the harm attached to each project? Um thirdly, as an expert, is the current bill giving confidence that it is based on research and science? Or it is driven by fear and misconception that all harm is harm? And also, from a expert research or scientific point of view, is the notion of all harm is harm um a notion that should form the basis of legislation? Or do you think perhaps a a different mantra must be used when it comes to addressing um or formulating laws? Then lastly, how practically, how does the government achieve a risk balance? Um because you did highlight the issue of having a risk balance, but practically, how do you think that should be done? Thank you.
Chair, I'm not really sure who's next. Am I next, Chair? Uh Littape is speaking. Am I next? Dr. Littape, you're next, Yebu.
Okay, thank you. Uh I I I just have a a question which has been asked two or three times before. What we've heard from the from the department is that harm is harm. Now, if that becomes the new outlook of the Department of Health, that harm is harm, what impact will it have on other areas where harm reduction has been supported by the department? For example, with heroin users. Uh for example, with provision of condoms in HIV and AIDS. Uh even though i- i- it's not hundred percent protective, we promote that to reduce harm. Once we now, once it's now shifting on harm to harm is harm, what long im- long-term impact would that have? Or is the harm is harm notion specific only in relation to tobacco? Now, most of the deaths that occur in people who use tobacco, it's long-term users, it's adults. Do you think they deserve any consideration from this bill in terms of things that could be made available to them to reduce harm to them? Examples have been given where the UK said, not just to pregnant mothers, but to all smokers in their smoking cessation clinics, they launched what they called a swap program. Come and swap your cigarettes for vapes. Because they were going to reduce harm. So for for me, since your main theme is about reduction of harm, I just want to hear from you specifically. Because the proposals of this bill say harm is harm. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, can I come in? It's Fesani. If I'm audible.
Must firstly ask Honorable Mare to allow you. After after yourself, thank you very much. We had given a pro- come and then Honorable Mare, that's a bit, we had indicated she had a load shedding problem. Come in, Honorable Shabango, thank you.
No problem, Chair.
Th- th- thank you, Honorable Mare, and thank you, Chair. Uh uh greetings to Prof. Mark and thank you for your 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 presentation. Uh I'm I'm a lot shared at um um maybe I might have missed a bit, but not, I think I grasped everything that you presented. Uh have you viewed the data about the effective effectiveness of what these so-called harm reduction tools at the population level in South Africa? If so, can you share the data with us for us to review, especially data on the harm reduction since the e-cigarette have been around for about uh Especially data on the harm reduction since the e-cigarette have been around for about fifteen years. I- if you go to South African data, uh, Prof Mare, Prof Mark, the, these tools are not reducing harm, but instead in, they increasing, they increase harm since more people end up using both this product and the cigarette that they were using before. If, if you agree that there is still nicotine on this product, with, I, I, I've witnessed a lot of people that have been, uh, using this product, but they end up, uh, smoking cigarettes. Because the effect, the effect of nicotine is that you, it becomes, you become addicted. And then you, they end up smoking cigarettes. So I'm just saying, mentioning this, so as when you answer this, you must know that there is this, s- some percentage of, uh, people that when they use this product, they you, they end up using both. How would you then recommend this approach to, to South Africans? Can you give us examples of countries where what you are proposing has been done? And youth smoking and e-cigarette use prevalence have reduced or even stayed the same? If there's any countries that you can give to this committee as examples of what you are presenting, then the evidence that you have seen. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Yes, Honorable Mare, it's your opportunity now. You'll be followed by Mr. Mutubate, there's the last one. Thanks.
Okay, um, I just need to understand, I was listening to what the presenter was saying, and I want to say thank you for another view on how you see things. But I have exactly the same question. Harm reduction is still harm, because you say, um, the person stops smoking cigarettes because it's harmful, but he'd rather smoke the vape, but the vape is also harmful. So I just need to understand how is the, 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 the harm reduction, um, coming in? I just need to understand is, is you, if you see a teenage child, no, is, um, doing drugs. And you see the, the harm it is doing to the person, because we can see in the streets how people are walking mad because of drug use. And you say to the person, no, you will decide when you want to stop using drugs, you know? You will decide because otherwise you're not going to come to my office. I want to understand, are you saying that you give the, the person to, 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 to decide because they're not going to come back to your office? And I want to understand is because you are speaking as a doctor, no? And, and you are having your own little practice. And you are speaking as a person that is going to lose money because you're not going to have patients that's going to come in and to, 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 to see you, because you're going to say to the person, look here, um, don't do this because it's not good for you. And then you're going to lose the person. I just want to understand this thing, because for me, it's, it's, it's extremely, as I say to the person that is gambling, no, don't gamble, uh, in the casino. Go gambling in a safe place in your house. It is still addictive, it's gambling, you know? So where is the harm reduction in that? I just need to understand it, because the way, um, the presenter was saying it, she knows what she's talking about. She have clear, but she must come up with evidence to say that, you know, this vaping, because we asked the previous person, um, is vaping harmful? He said, no, I don't have the medical view if vaping is harmful or not harmful. But I know this better than smoking a cigarette, but it's having nicotine in it in any case. So does she have concrete evidence that moving from the one thing and you put another thing in place, is it not going to be harmful for the person? Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Chairperson, and thank you for the presentation. Um, my first question, the presenter, you are proposing different countries uh, that you are saying we must copy from them. Uh, you mentioned New Zealand and the United Kingdom. Are you aware that they are currently having a problem with youth vaping increasing even more than adult vaping? Are you also aware that because of this problem in some of these countries? And in order to protect their youth, the UK has banned disposable vapes and other countries are seriously considering other measures? Even in these countries, sorry, are you aware that these products are strictly regulated? So I want to know what, uh, why are you making this recommendation for South Africa? What informs this, uh, recommendation to, to us? And then my second question, can you give us the clinical or laboratory study that was done to establish the ninety-five percent safety you spoke about in your presentation? How much safer is snus compared to cigarette? And again, switching from one addictive nicotine product to another addictive product, is it the same thing as cessation or what? Thanks, Chair.
Well, thanks, uh, thanks very much, Chair, for the opportunity, and thanks, uh, Prof, for the, for the presentation. Now, uh, most presenters who advocate for vape, um, do so, uh, with the thinking that it helps people to quit. Now, I want to turn that around to say that, uh, is, is vaping, uh, not an initiation, especially with young people who have not been smokers? Is it not, uh, an issue or a prelude towards, uh, smoking, smoking cigarette? And, um, is there any evidence that you can present to this committee uh, on the success of the, the method that you have applied so far? Um, are you, are you suggesting that, uh, the bill, based on your presentation, the bill is treating, um, should not actually treat the cigarette and vaping the same? And my, my last question would be just to establish, are there any programs that you are involved in? Advocacy programs that you are involved in to promote or to woo uh, people around the, the method that you are, you have presented to us? Thanks very much.
I think Honorable Mutubate was the last one.
Okay.
Is there another hand after Honorable Mutubate? No, okay. Professor Marks, uh, just following on what the, the last speaker said. Why would they have wanted, uh, a bit of statements that are quantifiable? Then maybe just leaving to say, uh, what you say, you say vapes are much better than nicotine pouches, much better than tobacco? That, that statement, also my grandmother can say so. Uh, but, uh, maybe we would have loved to see science in terms of, um, uh, African speakers, uh, to say there is this harm reduction of so much. Uh, but just to leave with the statement that also my grandfather can make, or may not be that helpful. He, he, this bill is talking strongly on strengthening what was left, not being strong on, um, tobacco, like, bend, do the packaging, clean and all that. But you probably should be well aware that there's never been an act in the country that does, that deals with vapes. Uh, and there are so much all over now, and, and therefore, yes, we could learn from, uh, uh, some other countries, but I don't think to be a fair comment to say, don't be strong on this and that, as if whatever was there as a practice was ever normalized. It was something that people just invented and they said, well, while there will be so much criticism on this, um, uh, tobacco, which I, I share, tobacco has always been in the, in the field with the mint and menthol flavors. Once you are saying you are going to be, of those who are working around you are going to be out of market if the, if the flavors of grape, vanilla, ice cream, everything is not taken off. You know, the fair comment was, you already established a particular practice that you can also outdo if there's a regulation. So the notion that they may not be in the success of vapes if the flavors are removed, one would say there will be a less attraction to young people if these flavors are not, so there will be statements like that to say, if you even, if you are pushed to allow vapes to be there, and then, but this flavor that I make them palatable to young people, vanilla, strawberry, no, you are attracting. People who want vapes, they will always go for vapes, whether they are in mint or menthol. They will not say, I'm stopping it. Because, because what we have created as a precedence was actually not the right way. We introduced it even before regulations were there. So when you then regulate and say, I allow vapes, but not this one and not this one, not the single one, not with this type of flavor, the innocent herself should be actually, uh, acceptable. But the last one from my side, I would have wanted to be educated a bit by a professor on this issues. Do talk about toxins that do remain even there on vapes. Uh, and, and probably not just say they are less harmful, what other harm is there that remains with vapes that you will say, yes, it is removed if you don't take tobacco? What are other things that are still risky and harmful, uh, that are there? Let's know about them. From your research in the, in this space, and not just say, yes, they are less harmful, but in that, that's a statement I'm saying my grandmother could make, but what are the things that you can quantify, indicate and show that this is what is less harmful about this? But thank you very much. Then you can support us with your responses.
Okay, I'm going to try. I'm afraid that my, I've been trying to handwrite and my handwriting is appalling, so, uh, I'm not going to get everything. I, I'm, I'm a typer and I couldn't type because I'm on my computer, so please excuse me. I just want to just go back a little bit in our history. Um, and talk about what happened when we did try to be prohibitive in the past. And, um, what comes to mind immediately is COVID lockdown and the ban on cigarette smoking. And what that did, it didn't stop it. It just went underground and we landed up smoking cigarettes that were probably more harmful than those that were a little bit more regulated. I'm not a, a fan of cigarette smoking, even though there was a time when I used to smoke two cigarettes a day myself. As a single mom, as a time of stress release, when I put my children to bed, it was my come down. Now, I'm saying this because I think it's very important for us to all be honest about where we stand in all of this, in our own positionality. And during COVID lockdown, because I was running a methadone program in the underground parking lot of Moses Mabida Stadium, I too was trying to find cigarettes in the middle of a prohibition lockdown. So did that stop it? No, it didn't. Did prohibition make it more problematic? Yes, it did. And I just think that we need to take our memories back a little bit. So please excuse me if I miss out some of the really important questions that people have asked, but I will try to answer as many as I can. I do want to say that, you know, I'm here predominantly as a harm reduction advocate. I'm here not as somebody that is a scientist in relation to nicotine. So many of the questions that you're going to ask about, you know, uh, the more quantitative stuff, I'm a qualitative person, by the way. I'm not going to be able to answer, but I can tell you this, that there is an enormous evidence base at the moment around, um, you know, the less harmful effects, uh, of the kinds of products that I've been speaking to, including vapes and other nicotine alternatives as compared with cigarettes. That, that I think, and those are, the importance of the emerging evidence is that it is from people that are not linked to industry. This is very important. When we look at the evidence that we want to take seriously, we need to say that it is peer reviewed, that it is not linked to industry, and that we recognize, in my case, as a scientist, I would like to know that these come from reputable organizations, including universities, because there's some good universities and some bad universities. And so I have been sitting in recently on a number of international debates around this issue. And what I've been amazed by, and I want to say this, is by the kinds of academics, and I'm talking about very high-profile academics from very good universities across the world, and I'm talking about top universities, that are all moving away from this idea that we need to just see all nicotine products as harmful to a more harm reduction approach. And I'm going to say, this is the tidal wave. It is moving in this way because of the evidence that is coming out. So I want to put that, um, as, you know, as something, uh, on the forefront. Um, and I also want to say that, you know, if people are wanting the committee to be provided with uh, evidence-based research, there are many of us that can provide that, including myself. Um, because I'm reading about it, but I don't have the numbers for you right now, so I'm not even going to pretend that I do. So I'm going to try and get through as many of the questions as I can, and I'm really sorry if I leave some out. Uh, the first speaker around methadone and how do we, uh, evaluate what success is? Well, we do it, there are two things, right? Harm reduction is a spectrum. It's a spectrum that goes from abstinence to less harm, right? And so abstinence is on the harm reduction spectrum, but it's one outcome of many. So how do we measure what is successful in the harm reduction space, for example, of a heroin user? Heroin user who goes onto a substitute like methadone or Suboxone or Subutex or, or one of these medications. What happens? Their quality of life increases, right? They are no longer using products that are not legislated or not regulated. They are no longer looking for a fix every four hours. They are able to go from a high level of medication and downtrate slowly. But if need me, they can stay on the medication for as long as they like without it being very harmful to their bodies, right? And what we see with methadone is people start working, they start looking after themselves, they start caring for their children, they start building their self-esteem. So the quality of life indicators are what we're looking at. There are also economic factors, both at the macro and micro level, of moving from, um, substances like opiates to a more regulated substance like methadone, which you can downtrate to a zero use, right? Does it happen that people stay on methadone for the rest of their lives? Yes, it does. It, that is true. Is this a problem? Not necessarily. We don't say to people who have diabetes, you need to stop taking your insulin because it's a problem, right? These are chronic illnesses, some of them, uh, you know, substance use can be understood as a chronic illness, right? So yes, the UK does promote nicotine-only products, and yes, they have done this program of swapping. And I think that it is an interesting implementation tool that we need to be thinking about, where we do give people the option to say, try this and see if it works. If it works, great. Now, somebody asked me a question, and I'm not going to refer to individual names because I, 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 I haven't been able to do that. But in my own practice, people are asking, firstly, I'm not interested in people uh, coming back to my practice for monetary gain. That's not the case at all. Please remember, you know, I come from an academic background. The private practice has been on the side. It's not a money-making thing. It's me, you know, retaining my professional, um, practical sort of knowledge and skills. But what I do want to do is I want to retain people in treatment. And in this case, in psychosocial treatment. Because if I then say to them, you know, you're a bad person because you're smoking, they're going to exit treatment. And they may be coming to me to deal with a bipolar issue, or they may be coming because they've got depression. Or they may be coming for some other reason, because they're not getting on with their spouse. And if I then stigmatize them and I don't say, let's find another option, they're going to exit. And they may exit all kinds of treatment, and that is true of any sort of healthcare and allowed healthcare if we stigmatize people. So I wanted to say that that's my motivation. And have I done this with people? Well, this is an interesting thing. So I wanted to say that that's my motivation. And have I done this with people? Well, this is an interesting thing. So I work together with a, a GP very closely and we've been working in the harm reduction space. And in the last couple of months, we've been discussing exactly this. What do we do when somebody comes in? And we know that they have a chronic illness and we know that they're not going to give up totally. And we know that they are addicted to two things, the modality, that oral and that action of. Taking something in and out of your mouth and blowing smoke, or not blowing smoke, or blowing something, inhaling. And also the nicotine as the substance itself. And what we found to work really well is a combination. And this is different from what was presented earlier of totally nicotine free vapes with the pouch. And this is a re, this has been very, very useful because what people are getting is both. They're getting that sensation of being able to smoke. Even though there's no nicotine with a nicotine pouch, which is actually, you know, giving them that fix. So there are various ways in which you can substitute. That's the one that, that we've been using um, in my practice with the, the GP that I, that I work with. And it's been, it's been really, really effective. Are all harms harms? Are they all equal? Of course they're not, you know. It is much more harmful to have certain forms of alcohol than others, you know, not all alcohol is equal. And not all amounts of alcohol are equal, which is why we regulate the alcohol industry. Because we know that people are not gonna stop drinking. But we do know what is a more harmful amount of alcohol to use and what is less harmful. So does that mean that alcohol as a general substance is harmful or not harmful? We know that there are harms, but we also know that if we drink in a certain amount, the possibilities for harm are less, right? So yes, there are harms associated even with minor amounts of alcohol. But there are people that argue that actually there are health benefits. So all of these things are up for debate. And I think the more moralistic we become about this, the less we are open to answers. And for me, that is, that is a real question. Has vaping led to cessation? That there is a ton of evidence around. We do know, and it's been raised many times, and it's not just in the context of um, eh, of Sweden. You know, eh, laws have been and regulations are being reviewed all over the world at the moment. Because there is so much evidence that vaping does lead to cessation of smoking. Do people go from vaping to smoking? Generally not. But are there people that vape and smoke who have been smokers before? Yes, absolutely, right? In the same way that there will be people who are using methadone but are unable to totally give up heroin. Ultimately, the aim is for them to do that. They will drastically reduce their use of heroin and other opiates that are, that are more harmful. So you know, these are, these are not absolutist ideas, but we do know that those people that do get onto a substitute. Reduce the harms dramatically. So if we're looking at methadone, if people move to methadone as opposed to heroin use. Or they reduce their opiate, illicit opioid use dramatically, the harms are far, 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 far less. And quality of life improves. And I think that's what we, we need to be thinking about. So in relation to, you know, eh, submission of scientific research, I'm more than happy. Eh, to provide that to whoever wants it in, in abundance, in abundance, because it is, it is coming up. Where we are stuck, and I'm gonna be very honest about um, where the evidence is lacking, because it's where we need to be focusing. We don't know the long term effect, for example, of a nicotine pouch. We know that it's less harmful. We know that nicotine as a product eh has certain substances that do lead to, and I was very honest, I did not try and conceal it. That do lead to issues around blood pressure and increasing heart rates. And we do know that there are minor traces of chemicals and toxins in nicotine that of course are harmful. But in comparison negligible eh, um, if we look at combustible tobacco. So I think, you know, we do need to engage in the, the, the sort of space of relativity. Because if we absolutist, we're gonna, we, we're gonna lose the ball completely. Um, so we do need to be doing more research on the long term effects and that is only beginning to happen. But can we wait another ten or twenty years before we start looking at these substitutes as possible ways out? No, we can't. I think we would be doing ourselves and our population a huge injustice by doing that. So yes, definitely, the legislation, and I wanna say this in relation to the last point that was made, um, or the last two points. We have in our National Drug Master Plan, which has been in existence for a number of years now. A very strong, a very strong positionality on harm reduction. And that carries over into other spaces in the legislative eh field in our South African law. So in, in many ways, this act, this bill, this act, however you wanna define it, is actually going against the rhetoric. The principles, the frameworks, the value systems of many other um, eh, laws and acts that we have in South Africa. And, and we need to have coherence. We need to have coherence. Um, and this is important particularly for the Department of Health, the Department of Social Development, that we're able to speak with one voice. If we talk about harm reduction, we're talking about harm reduction in relation to all substances. Okay. So what can we do in relation to, to young people? You know, I think. Eh, if we learn, for example, from the New Zealand case, and New Zealand's an interesting case, by the way. Because they moved from a very prohibition approach to what I would call a space of regulatory tightening. Which is maybe where we need to be looking at. So what they've started to do since, for example, mid twenty twenty three is to say. That there's, and this is how they've introduced the, the sort of less harmful space, is to say. There is a ban on the disposable vapes, we've heard about that already, restrictions on, on flavors. So getting rid of like candy flavors, cartoon names, all of that kind of stuff that appeal to young people. Um, having buffer zones, no smoking zone, no bu, no vaping zones around and in schools and other institutions. That are, that where youth congregate and are likely to go, eh, battery safety requirements. Um, increase retailer fines. And I think that it's looking at the retailers that is really, really important. Because that's where responsibility lies. It lies with the industry, but it also lies with the um, with the retailers. And then, of course, when people go against these new bans or these regulations. We need to ensure that there are some severe fines that are attached to it. Now, do fines always work? No, they don't always work because some people can't afford fines, right? So then we need to think, what are the alternatives? If you get a young person, for example, smoking in a school or in the surrounds around the school using a vape. What are the measures that we bring in where fines are not a possibility because they're not earning? So we need to think about these things. And I think it, it's gonna take some concentration around that. I do wanna say as well, that the evidence that exists globally is not gonna be that different in South Africa. What we do know about South Africa, and this is a scary reality. Is that whereas in places where alternatives and substitutes in relation to nicotine products have been brought in. Smoking has reduced dramatically, dramatically, right? So we're talking in Sweden, less than five percent. We're talking in, in, in other countries also massive, massive reductions. In South Africa, what do we have? We have an increase in smoking cigarettes. So we've got a serious, serious problem. And people are smoking for a number of different reasons, right? And they're also smoking because cigarettes are fairly, are fairly cheap still. Um, particularly those that are, you know, eh, um, available on, on the black market, right? So. The sellers, the retailers need to be targeted, the industry needs to be targeted. The advertising needs to be targeted. The public health domain and specialists need to be giving out the right information. They need to be saying what is less harmful and not saying that it's not harmful. Because I'm not a person that is gonna stand up here and say nicotine does not have harms. It has harms, right? But they are substantially lower. And we do need to engage with this, as we do in any, any other space of harm reduction. So Dr. Lethla, that is in response to your question about is harm harm? Yes, there are harms associated, but we have to go for what is less harmful. We really do. And eh, you know, I think we, we, we should be doing this, by the way, in all aspects um, of um. Of legislation and of governance, not just in relation to, to what we're talking about now. I think using harm reduction as a governance technology mentality is very, very important and it's very, very useful. And it also speaks directly to people and meets them where they're at. So in South Africa, it is true that we don't have enough data. And I think if nothing else comes out of this conversation, eh, we do need to be saying, what is the evidence that we need? So that we're able to make the arguments that, that, that we wanna make, you know, because we are basing a lot of what we know. On evidence and data that is not South African based. But I wanna say this, you know. What happens in the rest of the world, we are part of a global network, you know, in places like Malaysia and China. And a variety, and I'm not necessarily including China in this, but a variety of middle to low income countries are moving towards legislation. That is in the harm reduction space around tobacco use, then I'm not sure how different South Africa is. And I think we keep on thinking that South Africa is exceptional. It's not. What is exceptional is the rise in tobacco smoking in Africa as a continent, but in South Africa specifically. Um, okay, so then, um. You know, this thing about prohibition and um, eh, you know, what is worse? The biggest exhibitor of what happens with prohibition and what happens with bans. And what happens with trying to over, you know, to, to regulate in a way that doesn't meet people where we're at. Is the opiate epidemic in the United States. And the dismal mess that the war on drugs has had on people. Why is this? Because people have started and continue to play soccer in the dark. And we can't anymore, in the case of the US or anywhere else where drugs are criminalized, bring it out in the open. Let people ask for help and try and find suitable and less harmful alternatives. It's a real, real problem. So I think for me, that, that, that needs to be top of mind. Is youth vaping increasing? It probably is. In fact, I could almost certainly say it is, you know. But here's the thing, right? If young people didn't go to vaping, what would they be doing? This is the question. Now, if we look at a place like Europe, I don't know if anybody eh has been, was in, had been to Europe, let's say fifteen years ago. All young people were smoking cigarettes, so were adults, right? Now, if you go to many of the European countries, people may be vaping, but nobody's smoking. And there are serious, serious reductions in harm in relation to that. So the problem that we have, the dilemma that we have, is we don't know what young people would be doing. If they weren't vaping, what substances would they be using? Now, I have a twenty year old living with me and he has gone from starting to smoke. Because his friends were, to having a conversation with me about what is less harmful. And because he was smoking, eh, he got addicted to nicotine. He does have ADHD and the nicotine plays a role in that. And now what he's doing, and he's really proud of himself, is he's using the pouches. And it works well for him. It works really, really well for him because he is not so much addicted to the modality. But he is addicted to the nicotine. And I'm hoping that it will be reduced as we start using the pouches less and less, which is what's happening. But if I take those pouches away, he'll go straight back to probably using eh tobacco or, or something else, right? So, so, so we do need to think about, you know, lesser harms. And therefore, no, harm is not harm. There are more harms and less harms. Is vaping a gateway? Now, you know, this is not the only place where people speak about gateways. And I'm gonna say this as somebody that's been in the drug space for a very, very, very long time. This language of gateway is extremely unuseful. There are, there's very little evidence that vaping leads to smoking. In fact, I have not seen any evidence that convinced me of that. Eh, and we, I can send as much information as you want. It's the same as people saying that cannabis is a gateway drug to other drugs. That is simply not true. There is absolutely no evidence to support that. Except perhaps, perhaps, and I don't even know if this is true. In people that have severe, severe, severe mental health issues. And even then, I'm not convinced about it. So people use substances for various different reasons. And I think what is critical about the harm reduction space is the question that you ask is why are you using this substance? What does it give you? It gives you something. It gives you something. If I say to you, you are, you have an obesity problem, but you're drinking a lot of caffeine. And this caffeine is raising your cortisol levels. Your cortisol levels being out means that your insulin is no longer regulated. You need to reduce your amount of coffee that you're drinking. I'm not telling you, you must stop, but we start with reducing. Or we start and we say, okay, what tastes similar? People may have heard of something called Mesquite. What does Mesquite give you? It gives you the taste. But you want the hype, have some green tea, it's much more effective. We combine those two. We look at them, we say, is this gonna possibly reduce? And hopefully at the end of the day, if you've got a problem with eh, with weight or any other, you, you're having heart palpitations and you're having a lot of caffeine. What are we gonna do that will make it better, right? If I say to you, just stop, I'm gonna lose the battle altogether. Okay, um, and then the other question that was asked is, do we need to distinguish? Between vapes and other nicotine products? Yes and no. You know, eh, you know, in the sort of, the current legislation, it's really speaking towards electronic cigarettes, vapes and so on. And we're not engaging with the other nicotine products, even though they're on the market. I think we need to be engaging with all of these as substitutes, as less harmful products. As ways of getting to tobacco smoking cessation, which I think is the major harm. Not only the harm to individuals, but also the harm to people that are exposed to smoke. So not all harms are equal. Yes, there are always harms, but we are trying to look at what is least harmful. Most practical, most evidence based. Chair, you spoke about the quantification, which I haven't given you and I absolutely. I'm not going to be able to give that to you today. If I went back, I could bring it to you, but I'm not gonna provide that today. And it would not be my own research, because as I've admitted, I'm far more interested in the qualitative research space. Although I read the quantitative research space because it informs the way that I think and the kinds of eh advocacy work that I do. So what I can say is that I have been present in a number of tobacco harm reduction. Conferences mostly across the globe. There's one coming up this month in Poland. And I am, I went in skeptical. I went in thinking that people from Yale and Harvard. And UCLA and Oxford and um, Gdansk and all of these universities. Um, that were, that were present. I was, went in thinking that they were going to be. Um, totally against um, nicotine alternatives. But every single person that stood up was a harm reduction advocate and they were not selected because of it.
In your last three minutes, you are in your last three minutes.
Okay, so in short, Chair, what do I think we need to do? Eh, because somebody said to me, what do we do with the current bill? The current bill, its intentions are good. And I think for the most part, it is positive. But where do I think it needs to change? A couple of areas. One, the language of harm reduction needs to come in. So it aligns with other um, legislation that we have in relation to substances. Secondly, I do think we need to add to that, um, the um, the other nicotine products. That are available for smoking cessation. And thirdly, I really think we need to put our minds. To what this means for young people in terms of advertising, in terms of flavorance, in terms of. Um, eh, in terms of retail, in terms of all of that. Um, and we can, we can learn from, from places like New Zealand, which is a very progressive country, by the way. And has changed from saying no to saying, yes, we need to engage with harm reduction. Thank you, Chair.
Right. We are glad we have met you and we have listened to you. Right. We are glad we have met you and we have listened to you. And it will be part of a bigger picture of uh. Things that we are going to be considering as a, a portfolio committee moving forward. Uh, you need to be assisting us in the country. Uh, since countries have moved this way. Uh, it shouldn't be that, uh, nothing should be done, but eh, it could be that you do this, this and that, please. Consider thinking about this, that and the other. Okay, this committee assists with your presentation. And if we do need you, you're not very far from us, Dylan Bosch.
No, I'm not. I'm actually in Durban, but I'm linked to Stanley brush.
Okay, thank you very much for your contribution. And honorable members, that brings us to the end of our meeting today. I thank you very much. Your day started very early this morning. I'm glad you are still uh, logged here. Very much, but let me wish you well and have a good evening. Please don't forget to log in at nine o'clock tomorrow. It's not my call. It's a training of all of us as members of parliament. Uh, enjoy the training tomorrow. Good evening to all of us. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Good evening all.
Evening.
Thank you. Good evening.